It's gonna be for Monday night, it's gonna be discuss the list of twenty twenty four alcohol license renewals. These are existing alcohol licenses what we have.
I think it's twenty two of them.
Twenty two of them.
And they've all paid.
And they've all paid, and so, Chief, we don't, we don't have any trouble out of any of these folks, do we?
There's one right now that kind of rides the fence.
Oh.
They have several fights and shootings and other things going on. I'm gonna recommend we issue them a license, but if they don't get it under control pretty quick, we may have to go back and say we revoked their license.
Okay.
Is this a yearly thing?
Yes.
So can I ask who this is?
You have to ask.
Well, I have my suspicions.
I was looking through here. I don't see a name I've read.
State line bar.
State line bar.
No, it's on our.
It must be under somebody else's name.
A party over there, huh? Party and fight.
But I also haven't named it.
We had a shooting there two months ago.
Really?
Yeah. In the parking lot. We've had several instances where people have got beat up and fights in there and now shooting.
I didn't know. Okay.
I don't think it's on there.
I didn't see it.
Check on that one.
Okay, you gotta check on it before Monday.
Did she not send it to them? I don't know. Y'all look at this, you won't see them. These, these have all paid though, but I'm not seeing state line up there. Or is that the one? Who had it before Janine Gollum though? Maybe her. Mine lives cheap here. Is that it? Satchel? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Satchel, that's it. I was just looking at the top line and all of the universal, I signed Janine. And also we got some, have a new one too.
Yeah, the next item is discussing new alcohol licenses for Venus Trading. This is a guy that we've already approved of an alcohol license for him. He's the one down by Smith South Central that's selling the daiquiris or whatever it is.
Thought we already done that.
We have.
The liquor, the liquor store has a license. He's opening up a video poker.
Opening up a machine in the back.
All Venus Trading.
And he needs another separate license. It's a different deal altogether.
If he wanted to come down there and do ribbon cutting on the sun. Not happening.
But anyway, that, that, that will come back. I'll see you tomorrow then. So he's putting video poker in there. I see. That makes sense. All right. The next item is gonna be discuss the adoption of a resolution for the L C D B G twenty twenty four language access plan. This is just another, to be eligible for these grants that we give, this is just another thing we're gonna have to do. A resolution we're gonna have to pass.
Yes.
Okay. Language access point.
It's part of the federal funding and they wanna make sure that you have access for people that have limited English proficiency. So you can communicate with them. Or access, you can get access to more of them or, you know, I kinda like the liaison to help them get to work if they needed somebody.
Well, I had two years of Spanish, but that's about as far as I can go with that. Didn't learn too much in that.
Thought becoming an American citizen had to fit in.
You do. I do. I do fit in.
I ain't talking about you. Jury still out.
All right. Next item is discuss a change order to, to the. Is somebody trying to get in line?
It wasn't obvious, Dennis, but I thought.
Well, it might lock itself back. Yeah, that's Dennis.
He ain't pulling on the right one.
I don't know. Sometimes they'll lock themselves back. I thought that's you out there, Dennis.
What's the difference between Chavos and El Nolos?
Chavos is.
Oh, I know where's that. I'm saying. One to fifty.
One of them is low alcohol content and the five hundred is the one that has the high end loads.
At least they'll.
They both serve, they both serve margaritas.
Well, I'm just telling you the difference between the two.
Which one's paying high and which one's paying low?
Oh, Main Street is a fifty. Chavos is five hundred.
You need to check, we'll need to check on them 'cause they're both serving margaritas.
Well, they may not.
Both of them are serving high content.
Okay. I don't know. They just turned it in and that's, you know, they have the option whether they wanna be high or low content, so I don't know.
If they're low and doing high, then we'll.
Yeah, we need to, well, we need to get another two fifty out of them too if that's the case.
Shut them down. Do that. Okay, next item. Okay. Next item is change order. This is involves, did you give him a copy?
They got a copy of the letter.
Okay, there's, there's a letter in there from John French to y'all. We're talking about this job we're doing down behind the old movie mania, little video store. It's where the, the culverts all caved in and we got a bid and y'all approved for Tim to replace all that for sixty three thousand five hundred and sixty two. Is what we approved. Now they've come back after the engineer has looked at it and he is saying that because, and you can read the, the letter. Well, I'll read it. In a previous meeting when discussing drain pipe replacement off three seventy one by the video store, I made a comment about upsizing the existing pipe being replaced. My recommendation was to use a larger pipe to plan for any future runoff because the larger pipe would add additional storage to the system. And it would be available when downstream drainage improvements were needed. In our discussion, it was mentioned that elevation restraints. In other words, there's pipes and all kinds of stuff that it can just go so, so low, you know. Because of elevation constraints may be a problem for the larger pipe. The answer depending upon available funding is that there are different options for multiple runs of round pipe. There's a elliptical pipe or an arch pipe, which is the best option. He's just telling you that this, this pipe is kinda shaped like, like a oval, kinda, kinda squished. And so therefore it doesn't take up as much room this way, but it gives you more, you know, it holds more water this way. So then, so to fit in there where it needs to go and get it, get it to be the size you need, it needs to be this, this shape. So, and that's an additional fourteen thousand five hundred thirteen dollars.
Mike, on the police side of that pipe or traffic side of that pipe, 'cause that area floods pretty bad. Would that additional space or storage alleviate the flood?
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. I mean, that.
I mean, if it makes sense, then it would. I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. He's saying that the round pipe, yeah, it'll suck a lot of it off, but, but the bigger, bigger volume you take off, the better the result's gonna be.
Because it does flood pretty bad in that area.
And that's why we're trying to.
Don't go from there underneath.
Yeah, we're trying to, that's one reason we're trying to do, it'll alleviate that flooding right there, so. And the state's gonna help us with it too.
Well, the O T D doesn't want us putting out signs on three seventy.
I know, we can't touch it.
Yeah. They're not gonna come up here and put them out. They don't want us putting them out either when there's water standing in the road.
No, if they put them out, they don't want us moving them.
And it's really dangerous.
I know, I know.
Especially here with the, um, two the protey water right there.
Yeah, the other was a big old drainage thing off and people running in it.
Well, that's where you're gonna run, running, getting there to come back.
I think that day I told them, I said, just go ahead and do it, you know, but they, they jumped all over us. If we touch that road. Um, it's our road, they say. Okay, well, that'll come up Monday, Monday night. And that's all I had. Chief, I think you've had the next item here.
Yeah, sure. Uh, I've got six officers that I'm asking for pay increases on. Four of them I'm asking for a two-step pay increase, two of them I'm asking for a one-step pay increase. The first one is Leon Third Deal. He currently makes fourteen dollars and sixty eight cents an hour. I'm asking for two steps. He's been employed with the police department since two thousand and thirteen, so he's been with us for ten years now. He has received two raises, excuse me, he's received three raises in that ten years. One when he got promoted to sergeant and the other two when the citywide raises went across. He does a good job at Brownie School protecting our children. And once again, like I said, I feel he's deserving of a two-step raise at this point in time.
When did you send the rate, his rates from?
Right now he makes fourteen dollars and sixty eight cents an hour.
What is the two-step? It'd be basically a eight percent increase, but there are four step, four percent for each step. I'd have to look at the chart to tell you the exact amount.
I'll get our check later.
We wanna keep to the chart that we have.
Fourteen dollars, just say if you did it ten percent would be a dollar forty. So you're gonna, he's gonna be close to sixteen dollars an hour. The second one would be a dollar and seventeen cents.
Okay.
Uh, so fifteen, still close to sixteen, almost sixteen eighty-five.
I'll have the exact figures when they're on the short chart.
Second one, Cliff Causey, he makes fourteen dollars and sixty eight cents an hour. He, uh, just like Sergeant Third Deal, Sergeant Causey got the pay increase when he made sergeant, plus the two citywide raises. He's been with us since two thousand and fourteen. Certified dog handler, valuable employee, could leave me at any point in time and go to work at Wade Correctional Center where he came from, making twenty-two dollars an hour out there starting off. So I'm, once again, I'm asking for a two-step pay increase to keep this valuable employee. And, and if y'all have any questions about any of these, just stop and say, hey, I'll be glad to answer. The third one to Fanny Rankin, she makes thirteen dollars and five cents an hour. Been employed since two thousand and fourteen. Have received the two citywide pay raises, no other pay raises other than those two. And I'm asking for two, two steps for her. Sergeant McWilliams makes fourteen dollars and eleven cents an hour. Has been employed since two thousand and eleven. Received like Sergeant Third Deal, Sergeant Causey received a sergeant's pay raise plus the two citywide. And asking for two steps there. The other two that I'm asking for one-step pay raise on, Julian Del Renzo. He makes fourteen dollars and eleven cents an hour. Was with us for a while, left, recently came back. Since he came back, he has been certified with a narcotics dog. A valuable employee. I mean, like I said, he can leave and go back to the oil field whenever it kicks back off. Just trying to keep him here. The last one, Rodney Howe. He's been here since twenty twenty one. He makes fourteen dollars and thirteen cents an hour. Detective Frazier is fixing to retire on us in a few days. December the fourteenth will be his last day. And Mr. Howe has been training with Detective Frazier for the last six months. He'll be the new detective and he is deserving of a pay increase at this time.
Okay.
Let me, let me ask you this, and I know we're looking in personnel book and doing some things for next year. Does this have to be done now or can it be, 'cause I mean, I know what, two months ago, maybe they wanted to.
We're fixing to redo the whole.
Go up like in fifteen years vacation time, stuff like that.
Yeah.
So we've been trying to look and I, I've looked through the book, Derek's got the book now, to try to redo a complete package. Am I correct?
We're fixing to look at the whole, 'cause it's not just about the police department.
Right.
Spring Hill's about everybody that works up here, but we, we've gotten a spreadsheet ready for all employees. And one, at a certain point, I'll get the department heads involved with their particular people. Uh, but it's not at that point. I'm still giving the information, but we've got to change everybody, not just the police department.
See.
And I, I'm gonna pay for it, I don't know.
You see, just like I.
That's another thing.
When we done the water meeting up here last month, those two nights. And all the certifications they had to do, Mike got to talking to us and he said, you know, another, I think, four years, he said, he's out of here. We don't have anybody else certified to do water. So my thinking was, we need to do something for an incentive for some of these guys that are with us now. An incentive to go ahead and try to get these, these certifications done. So we're just, we don't wake up one year and I may not be here, none of us may be. We just wake up one morning and we have nobody in this town certified to do nothing. So that's when we got to talking about looking at all these.
Well, by January, we should have it all together.
I'm trying to live by the mayor's rule of we don't talk about what other people make, I'm just gonna talk about what these officers make. I said to, to Mike one time, and I hate to say this with him not being here, but I asked him, I said, how many of my men can you hire? He said, all of them. How many of my men, how many of your men can I hire? My officers go through fourteen, sixteen weeks, excuse me, just add two more weeks. Sixteen-week police academy, psychological evaluation. Wear a ten to fifteen pound bulletproof vest, wear a gun every day, a Batman belt that has everything and his mama on it. You put them behind a police car. I mean, I hadn't asked for these officers, these officers have been with me for a while, especially the top four. And they're struggling to get by. When their paycheck, if their paycheck don't come at the right time, things get turned off and they go without. Uh, this is the first I've heard about, I've heard with redoing a handbook, but nobody said.
We haven't got to that point yet.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Nobody, that was the first I've heard of.
Well, I mean, that's what is going to be everything.
I'm just saying at this point in time, we're gonna lose some officers if we don't do so. And I don't know how long it's gonna take to do a handbook or, or any of that. Because I had one the other day that couldn't have passed, passed the police academy, seen it twice. And I finally said, look, I can't, I can't employ you anymore. You, you have to be certified through the police academy within one year. Law says one year, either enroll in or completed a police academy. And I'd already stretched it out to about two years and I said, I can't use you anymore. Uh, he said, I understand. He went to work at Wade the next day, making twenty-two dollars an hour. They don't have to be certified over there? You don't have to be certified. I went to work over there when I was eighteen years old and they've gotten pay raises. Like I said, with his police experience that he got here, he went to work over there making twenty-two dollars an hour. And every one of these could leave and they've, they hired them that fast.
But like, that'll be on there Monday night, but like I said, we are in the process of, of working on and getting them. And I don't know how we're gonna pay for it, but we're working on, trying to figure that out too for everybody. 'Cause I mean, they don't make, they don't make as much as these people do, but, but they, they're what, even further below than these people are.
Well, that's what I was asking, if, if there's any way we could hold off on this a little while till we finish.
Probably wind up having to hire some new officers and it's gonna cost you a whole lot more at that point in time. Because not only are you gonna lose this training, we're gonna have to retrain. I don't, it's to the point, I don't think they, they can, can, can survive if we had to hold off.
Okay, that'll be on there Monday night, so. Does anybody else have anything?
I just have a question. Uh, I just have a question. It's just on the bill bender here. What do we buy from hundreds of?
It was something with the Christmas home loan stuff, I think. Some, several of those bills to do with Christmas home loan.
It's a lot that the main street.
It comes out of the general fund. Main Street's part of the general fund.
So the Main Street money paid for.
No, this is coming out of the general, but it's decoded to the Main Street department.
Right.
That like Randy, Randy Burns Robert too?
That's first one in the carry for the Christmas home loan, yes.
It's, uh, and the, the, the pipes that buried, you know, with the holes in them.
Oh, no, no.
It's all.
They all.
And this pressure. Twelve hundred don't pay for looks like a lot. But when you figure his insurance.
I know.
These those animals. The upkeep of that, twelve hundred doesn't need cover.
I'm probably, uh, probably just doing it as a donation.
I'm gonna throw this out there for y'all because I've just been in on a conference call today with Blue Cross Blue Shield, you know, which is the city's health insurance. The health insurance premium will go up effective February the first and it's like a ten percent increase over last year.
It's like a, it'll cost us an additional seventy dollars of.
Seventy-three something for each employee. It's really, basically three thousand more a month.
It's like everything else.
And we compared the two plans, which is two different insurance companies. We've been shopping it and their recommendation, and I agree with them after I sat through the conference call and looked at the presentation, that we need to stay where we are because of the situation. We're in between what they call a small group and a large group, but because of the employees we have, they, they're wanting to push us over into the large group, which means your premiums go higher. And right now the city pays a hundred percent of the employee health insurance. We, we're not out anything on our health insurance except a dollar a week for our life insurance that we have. So.
A dollar a week?
Yeah. Well, it was a dollar a week, it's more than that now.
But that's just insurance that loses you. If you haven't renewed your car insurance, you're ready.
Yeah, everything's going up, everything's.
I mean, we've been with Blue Cross for years and I mean, it's.
Well, it's the place to be.
Down and everything.
And we've got, we've got one or two people, like one guy has cancer right now.
We've got some. They look at your, they look at the claim history that we've had. We've had a lot of claims this year, so they, they reanalyze it every year. And I mean, we could switch to another company and save a little bit of money, but then it's gonna hurt them on their prescription drug side of it. Because what we got with Blue Cross, we're not gonna get with the other company.
And like you say, everybody accepts Blue Cross, I mean.
Yeah.
We got health, dental, life and everything.
Yeah.
I don't think we got.
My question is, why is the city paying a hundred percent of the premiums?
They've always paid a hundred percent.
A benefit is a benefit.
It's a benefit to the employee.
They don't, they don't make as much money per hour, but they do have benefits.
We have retirement, we have good retirement and we have health insurance. So, but yeah, they've always paid a hundred percent of the health insurance.
Me either, me either.
No, I ain't never worked nowhere you got off your birthday, except here.
Well, it's considered one of the holidays on the list of holidays.
That's another perk.
When y'all gonna take Christmas off?
Uh, we will be off Monday, Christmas Day and the day, Tuesday, the day after. We'll be back in the office on Wednesday.
It's two days.
We'll get.
We've got Friday dinner and then, so that's good. And the same for.
Well, obviously it was that we could take off Friday, but we'd leave at noon on Thursday, so.
It's one day for New Year's.
Yeah, just New Year's Day.
New Year's Day.
We always get two days at Thanksgiving and two days at Christmas.
All right, Dennis, you got anything?
No. Yeah. I didn't have a handbook, I mean, for the race. You know, I haven't expected, but how long we gonna get here?
Well, as far as the race, uh, that, we've got the spreadsheet done and I'm, I'm hoping, uh, before our meeting in January to have, um, have some idea of how, of how we're headed with that for, for everybody.
Hey, mayor.
I mean, so if we done anything right now, this wouldn't go in February, January.
Now, if you go on this Monday night.
No, it goes right now.
I mean, so it's.
The next five period.
One chick, yeah.
I was gonna ask, um, is there any possible way we can get our zoning redone? Uh, for district one at least. I, I'm not worried about the rest of.
Why? What's the matter?
Because people are so complaining about trailers now, just like the trailers on freight. I'm just saying. The trailer down there by Miss Carolyn White when Lucy put it there, which is fine. But our zoning and Michelle and I were talking about it, it's been up in, uh, you know, since what year was it? It hasn't been.
Goes back to nineteen fifty-nine.
And things have changed since nineteen fifty-nine.
Yeah.
You have a whole new generation of people and my concern is.
Who would wait? Districts have been the same since nineteen fifty-nine.
The zoning.
Oh, oh, okay.
The zoning and planning handbook, they used to have a zoning, uh, group, am I right?
We still have a zoning group, a zoning board.
Right, the zoning board.
But they only made when something's being rezoned.
Right, right.
Usually law here. And then, you know, that'll be pretty expensive, but we, we can do, we'll do this.
I'm just.
I didn't know more, more.
In my time, yeah. You know, I'm just saying, since nineteen when?
Nineteen fifty-nine is the book.
Right, and those, that's the law that, that governs the zoning.
Well, now some things are called under the International Property Maintenance Code for a zoning, there's only two sections of town that's zoned or pre-located legally.
And what section is it about?
No, I'd have to pick one up.
With Georgia minority, district one, probably.
I mean, but there's trailers all the time now.
We got a ton of apartments there and the trailer has to be so many years, it can't be one of them old, old outdated that's not in good condition type to move into a neighborhood. They have a protection, you know. I'm not gonna go over here by Mr. Holister, moving nothing in. You know.
Oh, yeah, come on over.
No, uh-uh, uh-uh. Well, I'm just being transparent though, but there are no protections for folks that's been living here twenty, thirty, fifty years. 'Cause people can just do, move in wherever they wanna move in. You know, I guess it's a, I don't know, but it needs to be revised, that I don't know.
We will.
It's important.
Before we set the agenda for Monday night, let's go back to these pay raises. What is y'all's proposed, you said you have a spreadsheet, what are you proposing as far as pay raises?
We haven't got there yet. The spreadsheet tells us exactly where it is now.
But you think you'll have.
What you're making now.
You think you'll have this done?
I hope to have it done by January. The January meeting.
The January meeting, January the eighth.
January.
No, it's the eighth.
Okay.
Because I'm talking to the auditor today, she'll be here to do the audit report.
But you know how that goes. I'm saying I'm trying to get it by then. But no, all I, all I got to get together is what we've got on the books now. And then we've got to figure out where we're gonna go with it.
And plus, the state, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, the state supplemental law, the, the pay for the police officers is changing effective January the first.
And we've got to pay.
So the, they'll no longer get a direct deposit.
Hold on, is, is your, the state is direct deposit to the city and the city's been distributing.
That's what I'm, I'm not through talking, that's what I was.
Well, the mayor said we're gonna pay it, they're not gonna pay it. That's not correct.
We're gonna, we're gonna issue.
We'll have to disperse it.
The city's gonna get a check from the state.
And we turn around and disperse it to the officers.
Correct.
That's what we'll be doing, but that's changing and I'm working with the accountant now to see what we got to do to implement it into the payroll. But right now what we're doing, we do it as an adjustment and a deduction, 'cause all we've been doing all these years was collecting the tax that the state didn't collect, so your W two would reflect the state supplemental pay that y'all get.
Correct.
Which is six hundred dollars a month that you get.
On top of the discount?
On top of this pay, yes. So, it, it's. So, it, it's gonna affect that too.
Well, and any officer that is certified, whether you work, any law enforcement agency in the state outside of state police or, or for the state of, state government, you get, each, everybody gets six hundred. When I started, it was a two fifty, then it went to three hundred, then it went to five, and recently here it went to six hundred. But yeah, I knew that they voted on.
Six hundred a month, yes, so two hundred dollars a year. Was it draw state supplemental pay? They have to be post-certified to draw state supplemental pay.
You have to be hired with an agency for one year to have completed the police academy. And like I said, that's anybody, sheriff, any sheriff's deputy, anywhere, they get that.
But all we've been doing for the last several years, the state used to issue y'all a ten ninety-nine or a W-two and the city had nothing to do with it. Then they changed it, the city started having, having to calculate the taxes on it and withhold it on our W-twos. But now they're gonna start issuing it to the municipalities and they will be responsible for dispersing it to the officers. So, we're gonna, instead of them getting a check, like something you may wanna let your officers know, and you know, they won't get a direct deposit on the first of each month from the state anymore, it's gonna be direct deposit to the city and then the city is going to put it on their paychecks. But they're not gonna get it all, like six hundred dollars on that one check at the beginning of the month, because otherwise your taxes is gonna eat you up on that one. So, we'll divide it into the two, you know, the two pay periods.
Because you've been doing that, we got the direct deposit at the first of the month, but you divided the taxes between the two checks.
Between the two, but your money will get divided, you know, you won't get the whole six hundred on the first of the month, you'll get three hundred.
Three hundred and three hundred.
But they're, they're used to getting the six hundreds, what I'm saying, so I've had some questions on that already.
Okay, so you don't, you're shooting for, back to my original question.
I'm shooting for January, but then I might, you know how that goes, it might be February, but definitely by then.
So, I have a question, if, um, so, if you worked at, say, Wade Correction, or wherever you're talking about, um, so how do they do their benefits and does the person have to pay a, the premium or a portion of the premium?
Portion. Portion, it's, it's kinda like school teachers, it's portion. Uh, I could talk these officers into waiting. If you can have it done by January. If we have to wait till February, I'm probably gonna lose some officers.
No, I, you know how when you shoot for something, something always happens to keep people, but I'm gonna try to do it by January. That's all I can say.
Here's what I'm gonna ask you, ask then, pull my item off the agenda for Monday night. If it's not on by January, I understand, but if it's not, then I'll put this back on in January, because once again, the city can't afford to lose these officers. You know, it's gonna cost them way, it'll cost the city way more money to replace those officers and train.
Well, and we know that, and I mean, that's why we're trying to do something about it.
Yeah.
You know.
So, so.
I think that's fair.
So, pull it and hopefully you have yours done by January.
Okay.
And, and I'm still not saying that I won't come back and ask for these six officers for a step increase, because if we give across the board raise, they're still deserving of a raise due to the number of years they have served the city. If it's a flat rate across the board for, for all employees.
Yeah, we're gonna, Danny, start getting to work on it next week and, uh, and, uh, then we're gonna pull in the department heads later when we get it all together and figure it out. Who is working on this? Uh, me and, uh, Derek mostly, Derek's doing the spreadsheets on it, and Mike, Mike's having just a little bit with it. But, uh, it's just gonna take a lot of work to get it done. They want to get the department heads in, uh, you, Shelley, Mike, and, uh, get, get their, 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 their thoughts on it. And go over it all at first before we give it to the council to see what they wanna do.
Like I said, pull mine for this month, just hoping you can get it done by January and kind of reevaluate it.
Okay, we'll do it. All right, that's all I have for y'all, I'm gonna shut you up.